We'll try to talk as loudly as we possibly can. Good evening. And at the moment, we're still recorded, but hopefully we will be shortly. Since we last met, I have a couple of updates to announce. We did request, and the applicant was more than happy to extend the hearing process until April 30th, to give us time to complete the public hearings and go through the peer review and all the activity that we need to get done. So we've got, we think, ample time to get through the process. This week, we had a workshop which involved Horsley Witten. Horsley Witten is the outside engineering company that the town has hired to ...... issues. That the hydrological studies that were requested would be completed in time for our next meeting, which is February 7th, excuse me, I'm sorry, February 13th. And we anticipate that'll probably be a full night of discussion and testimony carried on the hydro issues. So that's kind of an update on what's happened since we last met. Dan, if you could say a few words about the workshop, and then we'll get into tonight's two topics.
Sure. I just really wanted to speed. The main topic of the session, the work session, was the hydrology and the hydrology study that's being undertaken by Neil Price. Neil is going to find four areas of inquiry that he is going to be ... So is there some voice?
I think it's the people who ...
Okay. Those four areas of inquiry are projects, compliance with the Federal Water Act. That issue is that this area is within the watershed of the Charles River. The Charles River is subject to a, what's called a TMDL, Total Maximum Dilation Load Limitation, on certain classifications of fluids, specifically phosphorus. What that means, that there's a target maximum daily load of phosphorus that can be entered into the Charles River. There are draft guidelines and regulations that could restrict new projects from creating or generating any increase in phosphorus that would end up in the Charles River. The regulatory framework is ... But Neil is exploring that issue, is exploring the legal, potential legal implications, but also to understand how much phosphorus potentially could be introduced into the watershed project, and whether there's any mitigation offsets that might be available. One such offset could be the reduction in phosphorus that is expected from the improvement of the drainage infrastructure on Lawrence Street. And when the Lawrence Street improvement project goes forward, currently, one of the more streets is kind of closed, I'm assuming she closed with the engine pod. With the work of being done by the state, there will be drainage systems in place that will filter out the phosphorus and other contaminants before it gets into groundwater. The second issue is impacts on close nearby wells. We know there's wells, private wells surrounding this project site, obviously a very large project site, and there's wells serving residential waters on Lawrence Street and some other neighborhood streets. The ones on Lawrence Street are of particular interest because the project septic system is going to be in a part of the site, and there's a concern that the septic system, or better characterized, treatment plant, that the treatment plant's effluent will go into the ground and potentially travel in the direction of the well. So one of Neil's focuses of inquiry is to understand whether or not that, whether or not the effluent will travel in that direction, and if so, whether or not that's a risk, given the amount of treatment that's being proposed with the wastewater treatment plan. So it's a big issue that Neil is looking at, is looking at it, and is going to continue to look at that with a report projected for the next meeting in February. Third issue is impacts from the wastewater treatment facility on Push Pond and potential interference with the AOL area. The AOL area, as you recall, is an area of the site adjacent to Push Pond where there was disposal of hazardous materials. The environmental cleanup of that site ended with a conclusion by the state that sometimes it's best to leave things alone and not remove what's in the soils, but to porten off that area so that it doesn't get touched and potentially impact the environment. So we've raised the question whether or not the introduction of this additional water into the ground on the site, whether or not that additional recharge of water will travel towards the AOL area, and if so, whether or not there'll be any interference with the contaminated groundwater or the contaminated soils within that AOL area. So that's the third issue that Neil is looking at. And then finally, Neil is considering whether the cuts, the excavation, the cuts on the site, whether or not that will have any adverse effects on the quality of the groundwater on property, and that groundwater, as we know, is the actor for a lot of the wells in the area. The issue there could be that if there's a significant amount of pot, there's less soil above the groundwater to fill around the bathtub. So that's what Neil's looking at, to see if that actually does create a risk to the quality of groundwater on the project site. So that's the fourth area that he's looking at. So that's my characterization of the scope that Neil has undertaken. As I said, he's been working on this for the last month. He does need some additional information from the applicant. That was discussed on Monday, and the applicant has agreed to provide the additional foren logs, test bit data that they have on the site that'll give more information than we have currently on the groundwater elevations. It's critical for us to have accurate groundwater elevations so that we can determine the direction of the groundwater. The elevations scattered on the site create a, basically, a map of where groundwater is located, and that gives us an indication in terms of English directions of its flow. So we're expecting that information from the applicant soon, and now it will convey to Neil, and then Neil will use that for our results. So in sum, we're expecting a report from Neil before the next meeting, the 2nd of February, and we expect that that meeting in February will be mostly dedicated to this topic. Neil making a presentation. I'm sure the applicant will have things to say about that as well. The applicant has its own hydrologist employed, and then lots of questions and comments from the board and the committee.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. That was a good update. Let's begin tonight's hearing. John Smolak, attorney for the applicant. Do you have anything to say, John?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the board. John Smolak, attorney for both applicants, Abbeville Residential LLC and Abbeville Development LLC. With us here this evening are Tom DePlacido Jr., principal of both applicants, Matt Murver of Bowler Engineering, our project landscape architect, as well as Henry Aronato of HPA Design, our project architect. And I'll keep my comments brief. Mr. Chairman, you indicated what we're planning to cover tonight, both landscaping and architectural design. So what we'd like to do this evening is first start with Matt Murver, who will walk you through the PowerPoint presentation on landscape design and any changes that have occurred since the last meeting we had, where Matt was describing the landscape layout. And then we'll proceed to have Henry Aronato discuss the updated architectural plans, elevations, and the like. Before we get to that, I just wanted to mention just one additional update. As the board may recall from the last hearing, we had indicated that we had, through our hydrogeologists, submitted a hydro geological report to the Mass DEP.
You've got the whole place to move down. It's like Moses parting the waves. [laughing]
It's okay, as long as I leave.
Definitely, definitely. It keeps right up there.
Good evening, everyone. Matt Murver from Bowler Engineering. Thanks for already talking to the project. I've been here before, explained a little bit about the landscape. Tonight, we just wanted to work through where we are now, briefly walk you through the plan again, and take some discussion, honestly, and then, and then you are another. I'm talking about the architectural aspect of the project. You can flip to the first slide. We've got a team, I think everyone knows who we are, if you can keep it all in here. So the site we've discussed, the Adrian Cowan in red is the total site, hundreds of acres. The acreage is preserving approximately 141 acres of open space, which you see right here. Serve the Abbeville project comprises about 52 acres of the site, and the Abbeville, it's like a gell here, comprises about 38 acres, a total of 203 acres. So the current site plan is what you see here, which has two entries off of Lawrence Street, with roads that loop around, with homes that face into the woods, into that open space we mentioned, preserving all the weather and natural features of the site. We show connection at Push Pond with a potential boathouse. Our main entry consists of a roundabout that is terminated by a village green, and I'll show some more detail on those areas on the little slide. What we're trying to do is tie this new neighborhood into the trail network and provide public access to these trails within the site that you see green, those existing trails. And our proposed pathway connections are highlighted in yellow. The full detail on those, the package we've submitted, describing the width and length of the sidewalk areas, just want to give you a sense of where we're connecting into that surrounding system. So we have a major connection going here from the neighborhood into the surrounding trail network, and also at Push Pond, which will allow access to the forty percent of these areas. Just wanted to highlight some of the distances to abode homes that the current plan, commonplace along Lawrence Street here, were 315 feet from the closest house on our property to the adjacent home, 150 feet right here, 180 feet at this location, 220 feet here, 250 here, 385 feet from the home across Lawrence Street, 150 feet from Lawrence Street, this corner, 525 feet to their stone, western edge, and 355 at this location here. Providing a wide swath of existing natural vegetation that will be maintained along this area and our slopes and the most prominent blocks. Since we last presented the plan, we had some common parking areas that we just wanted to highlight and do within the neighborhood. They're along the driveways and their own dedicated parking spaces, which provides an overflow of gas parking. It's a strategic location that will certainly relocate in the massive margins of that area. You can see that there are just some spaces allocated along proposed roadways that tie into our government circulation and traffic to the surrounding homes. And we've also identified some common open spaces that we've discussed in previous hearings, but just to highlight the gazebo area, the statue project, the town con, the pavilion, and the mail kiosks near the entry, and then the boathouse as well. The details are there, the people are approved, the direction is good. Again, the main entry showing proposed stone walls and lighting features that will mark the entry off of Lawrence Street, with proposed street trees and flowering trees at those entries. And that will be where the project's starting to be located, which will connect people through. The area that doesn't have any homes on it, this area is just dedicated to the access drive with a boathouse tree that's planted by the center, connected to the two. Flip to the next slide. So it connects to the town green, the boathouse, gazebo area, are all connected by suggesting a trail network. And if you flip ahead, it shows the character sketches of what these different areas look like. So the first one you'll see is the pavilion that terminates the town con. We have homes that face out onto that town area, but this would be the draw. And that's a quick question. On this town green, this is where the wastewater treatment plant is? That is correct. That's part of the finished area as it is. Correct. These are going to build it, so if you go back, not in this location now, the building is still on the overall plan. Would you mind sliding back a few slots into the overall? That should be correct here. So this is the field you're talking about. So the plant is over here, the pond, and then the wastewater pond in the field. That is correct. And this shows a larger scale view of that area. The boathouse, this is all view of connected, attached, measured, with high access. The overall landscape plan, I believe you've seen most of this, we modified it slightly based on the new roadway layout, home configurations, but the basic concept is the same. We'll provide street trees and streetlights along the main roadways, phosphorus planting between the homes that back up to each other, and I can get it before the plant lands on the street line. Through those common areas that we were calling essentially the streets, we're proposing 375 new contiguous street trees along those roadways. We've got 38 more metal trees with flowering varieties, dogwoods, crab apples, and earlys, and then evergreen trees that provide cooperating between units that we have for a hundred units of those proposed for the site. And that's on top of what's going to be proposed in the area to be able to get into the second investment. Overall landscape concept is to reinforce those trees and trees in character along those roadways, to produce streetlights at key intersections, and then, you know, we've got planting at units, which these illustrate here, which is prototypical unit types that protect the landscape. So we have a combination of ornamental trees, evergreen, large and small shrubs, and then gardeners enjoying those little green light in each house. And those are, those are all available in the patch that we provide. So these are two different looks at the home. I think Henry's going to talk more about the feedback. We've incorporated some new driveway locations on some of the homes where the driveway doesn't necessarily come into the front door, with the front and the corner unit, the front door, like face Wall Street, and the driveway, like face the other. So we've shown two prototypical units, one where the driveway fixes out the front, and one where it fixes out the side road. And then this illustrates the lighting. This is the streetlight fixture that will be mounted on poles at the locations you see highlighted here. We provided that as part of the package. And then on the homes themselves, would be these scotch fixtures that would continue that, that load of the streets here. All lights would be limited to key intersections, highlighting those areas that would be active. And each house, right, that's the, that's the plan that goes on. If you can play back if you don't remember the overall landscape plan, all the fact. Actually, that was fine. So you can see these gray and ash areas are where we're providing a middle mode or minimal mode seed mix that would cut down on the published, not made water to the property. As you know, the meadow, meadow mix, it would give the paint, probably not once or twice a year, but really meant to be kind of less natural. And so on that, we've also provided additional planting of evergreen trees in those areas between the homes as well, to provide more operating and supplies some street trees to the units. At the outer perimeter, really, those homes are looking into woods, we're not really providing any additional street trees or evergreen bug right on every river, we're really focusing on the landscape on the interior. Would that have been taken from the light side? The lights, the actual post lights, are they controlled by the individual homeowner, or are they part of the associations that they all go on and often supervise? Would you mind looking back at the lighting side? There's one at home.
For the record, Tom DePlacido Jr., the streetlights would actually be controlled by a homeowners association, would be the responsibility of the town. That would be maintained and owned by the homeowners association. And then each house that you see throughout the project would have its own lamp post at the end of the driveway, so that you have illumination through all the sidewalks and things as well. Those would be controlled on a photo cell from the house, and it would be requirement of the deed that those lights are maintained by each individual homeowner and lit in perpetuity as long as people are in the house, and be controlled by the photo cell.
Matt, you may not know the answer to this, but at one of our workshops, Tom, we talked about the houses on the periphery extending their backyards into that buffer zone, and that was, I think, a state agency, and involved talking to one of the state agencies about giving those backyards a little more room. Do you recall about that, a little bit, about what we talked about? Have you found anything out about that?
Actually, we're talking up in this area here, and we did be able to extend some of those lot lines out to push the houses back a little bit further, and still give them a backyard in that area, along in here. And then we were able to pick up compenser, compenser, extra open space in some of the other areas down to here in this area. And then we were able to include some other areas within the project for open space so that we didn't increase the density of the overall units.
Thank you. Were, were streetlights proposed at all pedestrian crosswalks? It looks coincidental, but...
So we don't have any physical crosswalks, per se, but they are at intersections where you would expect pedestrians to cross. So that is, that is intentional. We want lights at the locations where vehicles are passing through.
So Matt or Tom, the, it seems to be three kind of categories of landscaping. There's stuff that's attached to the homes, there's common area landscaping, and then there's the streets. And the streets are ultimately going to be conveyed to the town and any public ways. So you're just saying that the streetlights, you anticipate would remain with the homeowners association. Would they be outside of the right of way that's being conveyed to the town or in the right of way? How's that going to work? And the same question with the street trees. Street trees, town trees now, or are they going to be maintained by the homeowners association?
In an effort to reduce the cost to the town with that, we'd actually have, the streetlights would be in the right of way, but we'd actually have an easement so that it could be maintained by a homeowners association. Also, because of some of the extensive landscaping that you have coming in on both entrances that would be within the right of way of the town, we'd actually request easements that we could maintain that for the homeowners association as well. So that additional landscaping that you'd have on the entrances, up through the streets, in those common areas, that would be the responsibility of the homeowners association and not the town.
Is that the same with the street trees that you're closing?
If there was street, yeah, yes. The street trees that are within the right of way, yes, would be responsible to the homeowners.
So is there, is there any common areas that would be used jointly by both the homes and the rental project?
Yes, that'll have to be divided out of the, um, basically. We'd actually have a couple of the project area, and that's going to be a component of the project. First, it's going to be a treatment plan to be in the homeowner's association. Take the gallon per day flow of what the rentals, the mortgage, and the gallon per day flow of the, the, uh, sales units and four units, and bring that out, the overall setting, that the responsibility drops for that.
And are you setting aside, is there a reserve fund requirement with DEP for the replacement of the plant?
That's mandated, yes. At the end, before you start, um, it's not going to be that.
Is that funding that the developer is going to be putting into an account?
Yes.
Devin, did you have a question?
No.
Chris, Matt, I noticed at the rear of the property, you don't have any lights in that last cul-de-sac, at the very rear of the property?
Right here.
Right, and also to the left side, there's an area there that seems to be very dark. And then was it by design not to have any lighting over by the, the proposed dock by Bush Pond?
So I'll take those one at a time. We are lighting the intersection where this cul-de-sac comes off, and then, as Tom mentioned, each of these homes is going to have a post light in front of it. So providing an additional street light back there isn't really necessary. The, the streetlights are really at roadway intersections and not, not meant to light the whole street, you know, to a certain level. The lighting at the homes themselves and along the roadway will be by the post lights that would be at each house. And down here, we would foresee having, as we get into more detailed design, probably just some low-level landscape lighting down near the boat house. But there's no parking down here. This isn't a use that's meant to be at night, so this is, this is really not part of the street character, and therefore, we're not, we're not providing lighting down there.
Bill, I know you haven't prepared your final report on this, but can you make a few comments as a peer, from a peer review perspective?
Yeah, we have Scott Ritter from ADO. He's our, our LA. And we haven't had a lot of time to look at these, based on the presentation. The time Scott had to look at them, maybe he can comment. I would say that it takes lots of time, but, right, from my perspective and what we've seen as the projects of all, I think the overall landscape approach seems appropriate. Obviously, we have to get into the details of some of the types of trees, maybe where, where the species of plant is in place. And as far as the lighting goes, you know, there's usually two approaches. One, what is this approach where you kind of light the critical areas, the intersections, and where pedestrians and vehicles may be interacting with each other? The other approach is to try to light the whole development to a certain level. Again, my opinion is this is a better approach here. It's a, it's a neighborhood. The sidewalks are more interior, so development rather than on the roadways. So we'll, we'll take a look at this in a little more detail, but I would say first flush is, it seems appropriate for the type of development. Sorry, start adding.
I think you can have a lot of those points. I think what we'll also be looking at is the species of plant material, whether it's hardy for New England, whether it's good for roadway, what percentage of the plants are native to the region, whether it's pollinators, something like that, with tree spacing along the road that's become a key thing. Also, in places that are irrigated, are there any common areas or things like near the pond, where the water locks up, is there irrigation, just things like that? So we've got a lot, you know, we've got a lot of work to do. That's where we're starting.
I had one more thing, and I know this is a recurring topic. You can get an idea of how the homes that, I know this has been discussed a little bit, their homes, are they getting exported from site or imported from the site? Or is there enough material on site that you're going to use everything on site?
From our test holes, there's, yeah, that's where I get the habit.
From our test holes, if there's one active room on the site, is, as well, we could possibly add a 48 that will previously disturb that a minimal room, but the remainder of the site would have up and down valleys, those low valleys, more than a multiple feet of some cases in the room. So it feels a lot more than enough to have what we want.
We'll be, we'll be getting to your questions in just a minute. Hang on, please. Bill, will you and Scott be ready for the 13th, or full, report?
Yeah, we'll be ready for the next meeting. We're trying to get it as best we can as early as possible.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, so seeing no other questions from the board or peer review, if you have some questions, again, the mic's not working today, so if you could stand and talk as loudly as possible, introduce yourself to us, please.
Um, Lawrence Wilson, Lawrence, 33. You could sign in as well, so we're pretty sure.
Yeah, I have two questions. Uh, one is on the lighting, is there any thought on, uh, the lighting is being chosen to keep the nights dark? I don't know what the term is, but it'd be nice not to have a aura or halo in that area, because some people actually moved out here because they liked the dark nights. And then another question is, a loan actually going to be exported or is it prohibited? I think it is by the town, which you can't remove from the site.
Matt, you want to try to address this, sir?
Thank you. So on the lighting, the fixture we've selected is a full cutoff, yard scat compliant LED fixture. You don't, you don't see the light source, it's flush with the underside of the, of the dome itself. So the intent there is that there isn't white spill off property, we're trying to keep it all on site. And the post lights are very small, but they have a cap on them that prevents light from escaping to those over the yard scat property. And on the loan, our intent is not to export. We have several areas on site where we're providing burping between the units, so if there were any excess loan would be removed, what we need to do to do our earthwork, that would be the intent, is that that gets put back on site.
So that's a commitment not to move loan from the site?
We've got to put down the required, or one and a half, or adequate lawns and trucks and things, but the, I think, a difference that no room will be removed at all, it's tough to say when we don't know the depth, because I think there's a room that's in there in other areas. We've got to follow the landscape plan, the project, the board's had, for that's lawns and landscaping, we can, we want to make sure that we have a nice visual of the houses and the landscaping and things, we'll put down one and a half rooms, but the, these piles of room in different places like that, they may be, we need to remove some at the end of the project.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Can I sign in afterwards?
Yes. If you could state it is and address that?
Absolutely. Joe Murray, 32, Berkshire. Just a clarification, the perimeter of Bush Pond, the area directly near, what's going to be approached in terms of landscaping there? Are there any specific plans leading to that? And is accessibility upon going to be changed and added to the comment? Sure. If you wouldn't mind looking back to the main illustrative plan that is called proposed site, it's probably the fifth slide. That's a good one. So we are showing pathway access to the boat house and to the pond, at Bush Pond. We would be making this a minimally invasive landscape treatment along that edge. We really want to preserve the nature of what's there right now. You know, the dock would be on piles, so limited disturbance there. And the, the, um, the boat house itself would be on here as well, if you could see it looking that way. So we're, we're not really proposing to create a deal on landscape treatment down there. We are just trying to keep that to the, um, um...
Yes, sir.
That's from Al Fox. The most in the plan that nobody can defend or something, or, or shed, that's something that we're doing.
Oh, like, the tension basins? Well, they're, they're not on our, on the landscape plans per se, but we do show the locations for the, you can look back to that lack of, like, this one. So this is one such area right here. There's another one right here. So they are, they are located on the plan. The civil engineer discussion probably won't give that in more detail, but they are at the perimeter of the project. Do you have any more? Are there, are there any? What happens to water? My, my understanding, and I'm not the civil engineer, but these areas hold the water for long enough that they can discharge at their free development rate into the weapon system that they were already discharging into prior to the development. So these, these slow the water, hold it, and discharge slowly, so that the rate of flows match or are better than what it was prior to.
Is that a whole dimension of the structure?
Right. And it's just stormwater policy. Are there two more? Two monitors now? Well, our, our drainage calculation will be reviewed by the peer reviewer if they have it already, they have it.
And the, that's just to clarify a little bit. We have reviewed the stormwater design for the project. So the, the basins that Matt was talking about, they're actually infiltration basins. So the water that goes in there will go in there and infiltrate that into the ground. So we have designed to meet the state's stormwater policy, which is designed for the tactical weapons. There'll also be an operations and maintenance plan that goes along with it, that I believe the homeowner's association is the responsible for maintaining those, to maintain those in good condition, so they stay in operating condition.
So is there a block, so, so, development two or three, or is that a...
Uh, the, the design engineer, the, the Weapon Protection Act has a 100-foot block zone from the area of the weapons that the applicant is going to have to go before the conservation mission. Or any work that might be posted on that block zone?
Okay, thank you, Matt. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can you mention sidewalks or are there, are there any sidewalks?
There are, yes. There are sidewalks along all of the roadways, plus some pathways that connect in between the sidewalks, which were highlighted on the, uh, the, the plan if you don't mind. Going back to that one, you went ahead of the step. Uh, one more? Okay. That's a little tough to see, but each of these yellow dash lines represents the sidewalk that's adjacent to the, the roadway.
Do you have trees between the sidewalks in the street? Are you worrying about them breaking off the sidewalks? Because that's what happens with the, with the trees on two by four feet. It grows and roots in one and four feet.
Sure.
And then a nice, smooth block, sidewalk, uh, unlocker. So unlocker trees, there are no trees kept on at all, but putting them on a four-by-four foot, or I don't know how many feet, it's usually small for the...
The, if, would you mind flipping back to the, uh, the landscape plan, uh, lacking my bridge? So the, it's a little tough to see on this plan, and if you're welcome to come up and look at the hard copy I have here, but that, that distance you're talking about is wider than the path width that we're, that we actually have between the curb and sidewalk, it's about six or seven feet. And then we also have all the linear dimensions between the trees for a, for a root zone for those trees, so we're really not concerned about them. Do you see that a lot in urban conditions where you're planting trees in a four-by-four box in the sidewalk?
Right, a lot of sidewalks, you can't walk.
Yeah, absolutely. But, but here we do have a generous tree belt that's all connected soil, the roots have kind of room to, uh, to migrate into that full dome, it's a wide, so...
Matt, do you have a spec sheet or a detail sheet that shows what you're talking about? You've got, you've got the road, you've got a strip of six feet wide, you've got the sidewalk. Is there a detail sheet that shows that?
We don't have that detail, but we can certainly...
I think that we help us, for us to see and for the neighbors to see. Is it, am I correct, you're saying that there's going to be six feet between the deep surface and the sidewalk?
That's right.
Is that consistent with...
I believe so, I haven't checked that.
Okay, so in that six feet, you're planting grass and trees?
Correct.
And that six feet's wide enough for the root system not to be...
Yeah, we don't see an issue there. Like I said, if you only had six by six for the roots to grow, that, that can be problematic. But if you've got six by, you know, thirty feet, before you get to the next tree, uh, root zone, where, where we should have some space for this.
All right, a question. On the, uh, the lighting plan, that, Amy, if you could go to the one that, you have the, 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 the... Yeah. Are those red circles, um, is that the extent of the two-foot candle illumination?
No, no, that's, that's not. That is the, uh, that's just a symbol that's large enough to see at, at this scale. We've highlighted the actual, uh, the scale of the lumens right here in this little diagram.
Yes.
Uh, so two-foot candles is to this inner edge, uh...
The, uh, if, would you mind looking back to the, uh, the landscape plan, uh, lacking my bridge? So the, it's a little tough to see on this plan, and if you're welcome to come up and look at the hard copy I have here, but that, that distance you're talking about is wider than the path width that we're, that we actually have between the curb and sidewalk. It's about six or seven feet. And then we also have all the linear dimensions between the trees for, for a good root zone for those trees, so we're really not concerned about them. You see that a lot in urban conditions where you're planting trees in a four by four box in the sidewalk?
Right, a lot of sidewalks, you can't walk.
Yeah, absolutely. But, but here we do have a generous tree belt that's all connected so the roots have kind of room to, uh, to migrate into that full zone, uh, into the wide zone.
Matt, do you have a spec sheet or a, or a detail sheet that shows what you're talking about? You've got, you've got the road, you've got a strip of six feet wide, you've got the sidewalk. Is there a detail sheet that shows that?
We don't have that detail, but we can certainly.
I think that we help us for, for us to see and for the neighbors to see. Is it, Mike, Mike, correct, you're saying that there's going to be six feet between the deep surface and the sidewalk?
That's right.
Is that consistent though?
I believe so. I haven't checked that.
Okay, so in that six feet, you're planting grass and trees?
Correct.
And that six feet's wide enough for the root system not to be?
Yeah, we don't see an issue there. Like I said, if you only had six by six for, for the roots to grow, that, that can be problematic. But if you've got six by, you know, thirty feet of, of, before you get to the next tree, uh, root zone, where, where we should have some space for this.
All right, a question. On the, uh, the lighting plan, is that, Amy, if you could go to the one that, you have the lights, the yellow and red? Yeah. Are those red circles, um, is that the extent of the two-foot candle illumination?
No, no, that's, that's not. That is the, uh, that's just a symbol that's large enough to see at, at this scale. We've highlighted the actual, uh, the scale of the new ones right here in this little diagram.
Yes.
Uh, so the two-foot candles is to this inner edge. Uh, and I think you can see that presumably even more, it's, it's a much tighter circle than that.
The, the two-foot candles to?
The two-foot candle.
Points to the outer edge.
Right here. Right here. So that's, that's this zone inside the yellow dot.
The, the two-foot candle on the plan points to the outer circle, and the one-foot candle points to the inner circle.
Yeah, that, that might be, uh, those arrows might be incorrect, because certainly the, the higher foot candle is gonna be closer to the, the picture. So this is the two-foot candle circle. We'll clarify that.
And also, it appears that some of those streetlights are, uh, I guess the, because they're reversed, the, the one-foot candle circle is, uh, crossing some houses. I'm wondering how, how much is that gonna illuminate a house if they're within part of that circle?
Uh, are you seeing anywhere in particular?
Uh, in the southwest corner with that. One just above it.
Oh, right there?
Yeah, that one right there. In, in particular, that's one that I noticed.
Yeah, that might be a location where we can move that to the other side of that intersection that way, so that it's not, um, it's not shining. I, I don't see it being a big issue. They are directed downward, those lights, it's not shining in the bedroom window.
Could we, could we provide a?
Certainly adjust that.
Could we provide a photometric plan that actually shows at what point it becomes, essentially, zero footed wheels?
Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Can we do that?
Yes. I'm interested.
You can run that out to zero, for sure. That's something we, we ask those five members.
Okay.
That's fine, yeah.
Yes, sir?
John Seaman, Robert Road.
Can you, can you repeat that for us?
John Seaman, Robert Road.
Stand up, please, John. Stand up, please.
So, just a general question for our landscape and everything like that. Do you have any water feet or, you know, just elevation that shows exactly what you're doing to the land, or like what it looks like now, or how, and how much you want to do, like, uh, is there?
Like a grading plan?
Yeah, or some of this, you know, kind of, you know, these, uh, what you're doing, decide, or decide, just some of this, it goes back to show.
Um, definitely, we have that right now, almost like a concrete fill plan. I don't, it's about a still, yeah, that discussion, it's great. I think that, that's been talked about at previous meetings. We don't have that with us.
Uh, I think there's a gentleman in the back first. There you go.
Could we, um, reiterate for this designer?
All right, yep. Uh, Amy's yelling at me. Please, please sign in. Sorry.
Anybody who has spoken.
If you've spoken, if you don't mind.
Speak and then I'll sign in.
Perfect, that's good.
Thank you.
Tom Ryan, Park Street. Uh, this is the first meeting I've been to, so maybe you've gone over this already. I heard you speak earlier about, um, potential impact on groundwater and water in the area as well, and things like that. I thought, uh, months ago, there was an issue about airborne pollutants, possibly silica dust or something like that, and the potential impact on the health of people in the area. My other concern would not only be that, but, um, I recently had solar installed, and one of the things that came to my mind, to delay the excavation, having a lot of dust in the air for a long period of time, is whether or not it would have an impact on my solar production. So I don't know if that's something I've already put to rest. In terms of dust control, um, we, we run that by our peer review engineers, and I'm not sure if we have a specific response to that question yet, but, uh, that has been raised at previous meetings. We typically have.
Zazan?
Just for show.
Sick joke. So, we typically have conditions in our, is it working?
Yeah.
Great. We have conditions in our, in our decision that require applicants to, to comply with the town's dust and noise, noise control standards. And if there are nuisance conditions on the property or on the project at any time, that can be enforced by, by the town. So we typically will have those kind of conditions in the decision anyway. Um, but whether or not this project in particular will generate an excessive amount of dust or noise or other types of air pollution, I mean, that, that can be addressed by our peer review engineers, and then we can answer that at the next meeting.
So that's something that's on deck, because you mentioned phosphorus, I think about getting into the water, so it's a, it's a danger for, for a water system.
Right.
There's a well or, or the pond or whatever.
Right.
The excavation, the process of excavation that takes place creates a situation where that becomes airborne. Uh, whatever becomes airborne, whether it's silica dust or phosphorus or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll look at the dust issue and, and those contaminants, and we'll make sure that that question gets addressed.
Thank you.
Concerns about, um, dust and, and runoff and erosion were addressed actually in the comprehensive, uh, operation and management plan at the last meeting. Um, if, I'm sure it's posted online. Any more questions regarding landscape? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question for more than anything. Is that just on the, I call it, side, maybe spot side, in the north, or is that set along the home entrance?
Oh, um, just on this one.
Just opening?
Just on the main one.
Houses around there?
This, the berm, the, uh, boulevard treatment, that center island, we, we only have it at the main entrance here.
So no, this, this other development, yes, in this housing, people go and park it from the house, and you can't get around, and it's actually a safety issue, so just make sure that you're, you know, where anyone will stop, because if someone stops on the road, you go the other side of the road, it is a berm, you're just stuck, especially if you're fighting, or, 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 and then, um, how many additional parking spaces for that, for 200 and 400?
Uh, I don't have the exact number. I can count them up quick for you, though. Um, give me one second. When, when I sit down, I'll, I'll check that and, and get back to you on that.
Okay. And then also, when you, when you did design it, was there any, was there any consideration? I know it said how many acres were open space. I mean, let's be honest, it's available space for the most part. Was it ever a thought of open space residential design, instead of just the cookie cutter house every so many feet design? Was open space residential design ever thought to help with some of this runoff and other issues that I'm concerned with, and I saw it happening?
Can you tell me what you mean by open space residential design?
It's more like clusters. So, it's like something called balancing conservation in development, being an open space residential design. And there's a lot of research online. Instead of looking what I consider, the house every cookie be, you know, you, you cluster them, and then you use the land as more open and more development, instead of planting a tree on a sidewalk, saving plenty of hardwood trees you did, instead of keeping some trees or planting trees where they actually make sense of development, not just aligning street.
I mean, that's a really good point. It's actually kind of how we designed the, the project. If, if you look at the overall plan, and I know you're saying that some of that, uh, wasn't gonna be built on, but there's a lot of that that could have been built on. And we did cluster the development into a pretty compact neighborhood in one corner of the overall 200 acres, uh, to create a dense clustered neighborhood and preserve open space and connect people out into that open space as an amenity. So we, we see that, that contiguous, you know, forested open space as a, as a real benefit to the project and to the town, having that, having that there. Whereas if we, uh, this is pretty tight as it is, the way, the way this is configured, um, you know, the only thing tighter would be to go to really multi-story apartment units. You know, I know that's not what you're talking about either.
No. And then one last point about, um, wastewater. So is the pump down at the bottom? I, I don't understand where a pump is at the bottom and a grain area is at the top. I, when you explain the wastewater treatment?
Sure. Tom, do you want to talk to that a little bit? I don't want to misspeak, because I'm just the landscape engineer.
Uh, basically, the, uh, the, the wastewater treatment plant building is down at the lower part of the sec, uh, lower part of the project, so it works by gravity. Let me see. Um, hold on one second. So, so everything flows down to that building in there, and then correctly, it is pumped up into this area where we offer the, the greatest separation to groundwater, and, um, it's the furthest point away from potential, um, town well up in this area as well. So that answers the question. Um, if you had a follow-up to that, but I, I did want to add, just, I think I can address something about your parking. Um, Matt was gonna count up the additional parking spaces, but I do want to mention that each home, whether it has a one-car or a two-car garage, would have the parking inside the garage and outside the garage, far enough, um, that you'd still have room for the sidewalk. You'd walk by at a car, would not be, you know, impeding on somebody walking, um, down the sidewalk. So if you have a two-car garage, you'd have two parking spaces inside the garage and two outside the garage, and then you'd have additional visitor parking that Matt's gonna be counting up. All right?
That is about 30 additional spaces between the four different pods.
Right.
And then a question on the wastewater. Have you, have you ever thought of reu, for reusing the wastewater since you're treating it, possibly for irrigation or flushing their toilets or anything? Because you think of other areas that have water issues, like Hawaii or something, they reuse their water in their toilets and to, in their irrigation systems, because they, they respect, you know, respect their water and their runoff for their.
Actually, a gr, actually, a great question, and we were looking at that in some of the, like, the large common open area there. Um, unfortunately, it's very difficult with DEP in Massachusetts to do that and make it work.
The town of Lyndon's accepted in making their development?
Mm-hmm. I would actually, next meeting, when we have our, uh, wastewater treatment plant engineer here, um, he told me quite a bit of the reasons with it. Um, we are, and we, I wanted to look into that with everything. Said it's very difficult. Um, he can probably elaborate and answer that question a little bit better.
Okay.
Is there a project in Littleton you're aware of that does that?
There is, I can, I don't have to jump my hand. It was actually a small project in this, and they, and they, um, they think it was successful.
If we Google it, will we find it?
I would think so.
Okay.
I can get you the name. I don't have to jump my hand.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Sandra Myatt, Eric Road. Um, nice job on everything. Can we go back to the black and white that showed the?
The landscape.
Landscape plan?
That's one back from this.
So I was wondering if there's gonna be blasting to do some of this planting?
Um, blasting to do the plant?
I mean, there was, there were outcroppings. What happened with the?
At a prior meeting, I, I believe we explained where the outcroppings were, and in those areas, actually, we'd be filling, um, around the ledge and that, bringing the grades up on that. We, we can't promise there'll be no, um, blasting, but, you know, we don't expect any.
So if there's blasting, will you, will part of the construction management plan include a blasting plan?
In case?
At the prior meeting, yes, I agreed that that would, to be in compliance with, um, state regulations and the Town of Norfolk Fire Department regulations.
Right. And so the slopes that are on the perimeter, that are very steep, and, um, I know that's hard to read it, but it looks like it's about 60 feet, maybe in the front near. Near the Lawrence Street, those, right. So that actually, where you had it hatched?
Are you talking about this?
Right.
Area here?
Right. So it's, it's probably 60 feet down from the existing homes, and I'm wondering, number one, um, is that gonna meet the slope requirements of three to one? And number two, how are you going to?
Can you speak up? I can't hear you.
Is the, are you gonna meet a three to one slope requirement? And also, is there any terracing? Because it's 60 feet. You're supposed to terrace every 20 feet in depth.
So unfortunately, the civil engineer's not here to discuss the grading, but we're, we're showing a stabilization of that slope with a, with a no-mo slope mix in that location. And in terms of the terracing, uh, I, I believe the, the slope meets the requirements. I, I don't have the exact grades with us tonight, but I, I think these issues were mostly discussed at a, a prior meeting. Um, so I, I can't really speak to that right now. Apologize.
One more question. So when you talked earlier about the TMDL on, on the water, I, I believe the, the state has declared the Mill River and the Tail Race impaired. And in doing their calculations, they said that the Tail Race is a river, so I don't, I don't know that you've met the Rivers Act on the buffer zone at the Tail Race?
You want to, you want to save that for the next meeting?
Okay.
Well, the TMDLs were, were created a, a number of years ago for the Charles River Basin, and, um, they're not, uh, enforceable at this point at the local level. That's what Dan Hill alluded to earlier. Um, we're not sure when those would be enforceable, but I think that what the Board of Appeals is doing is, is taking an extra measure, an extra step to take a look at that, uh, to make sure that if and when they become enforceable, that, uh, this project would, uh, be in compliance with those requirements. And that's, again, part of the analysis that'll be done by Horstley-Witten.
Do you have a riverfront area on site?
Yes, we do, and, and the, the Tail Race is, is not a river on that. The, um, the, there is a river that is on site. It, uh, flows from Bush Pond, um, where the dam outlet is, and then, and actually goes in a, I believe it's a more of a northerly direction from there. It's, it's pretty definable on the plans and, and has been in the civil plans. I don't know if you can drag that down a little bit, Matt?
It's up, up here, right, Tom?
Correct. And we did, uh, go to conservation a few years ago before we started the design of the project, and actually had all the wetlands defined on the whole 200 acres. And actually, uh, the, the Tail Race was defined at that point as, as not a river.
Can I send you something? Can I send you something from the state that, um, when they looked at the impairment of the Tail Race, that they called it a river? I'll, I'll send it to you, if that's all right?
I think the issue here is that the Conservation Commission has issued an ANRAD that delineates the resource areas, including what's a river and what's an intermittent stream, right? And then, and those boundaries have been shown on the site lands. I'm actually looking at it right here. So there is a riverfront boundary. They're, they're outside of it. So I, are you saying that you think that that's inaccurate, that there's actual other riverfront boundaries, riverfront area that's not shown in the plans?
I think the Tail Race was considered a river by the state, and I thought that the state Trump.
The segment that's on the plan, on the site?
What's that?
The segment of the Tail Race that's on the site?
Right.
You're saying has been somehow classified as a river?
Right. I can send you some.
Okay, sure.
Okay, thank you for those questions. Our, our next presenter is Henry, who will,
Our next presenter is Henry who will discuss architectural.
Thank you.
My name is Henry Arnado from HPA Design. I'm here to present the architectural designs of the homes for the Preserve and for the rental units that we call the Commons. I'm going to start with the for-sale homes that take up 150 or so units of the 204-unit development. What we're proposing tonight is eight models of varying homes that range between 1,700 to 3,000 square feet. The vast majority of them have two-car garages. Every one, a handful of them may have one-car garages. The design of the units are designed to fit into the envelopes of the roadways and the streets and the lots that were developed as it has evolved. I'd like to go through, the first sheet is just the presentation of the colors and seven samples and then I'd like to walk through each individual model. Amy, if you could go to the next slide, please. Model A is the only unit of the eight that has a master bedroom on the first floor. It's important to distinguish that because it is also the only unit that has the garage door that is proud of the front door. We try to avoid this, but in, because we like to have the garage doors be less dominant than the entry and also providing more parking for the automobiles to park in front of the garage. But this is the only model that doesn't do that. We have a master bedroom on the first floor. We have living area, dining room, mudroom, and then upstairs we have a bedroom, a bathroom, and a loft area. If we go to the next slide. So these next two are derivatives of Model A and the difference primarily is how we shape the facades. They have different dormer treatments. This dormer is different and we also have different porch treatments and this porch runs all the way across. Also, if you notice, in some areas, we will be able to load the garages along the side so that the garage doors don't make quite the visual impact that some of these houses can do, especially the ones on Model A. Next slide, please. The Model B is a two-bedroom colonial, basically meaning that the bedrooms reside on the second floor. The distinction here is the garage doors are behind the front door. It's less of a visual impact, makes the house a lesser scale, considering that these houses are going to be 25, maybe 30 feet apart. In some cases, I think 20 is the minimum, right, Tom?
Yeah.
We don't want the scale of the homes to overpower each other, so pushing the garage back helps it in that endeavor. If we go to the next slide, this is a derivation of the B model that has different roof lines. These roof lines are not two stories tall and that is the distinction in the B2 model. And what that does is minimize the scale, yep, thank you, minimizes the scale and gives us a different floor plan on the second floor. Next one, Amy. Thank you. The B3 model is full two-story high and this gives us the choice of doing different vernaculars to the homes. This is more of a Greek Revival style. This is more of a farmhouse style and this is more of a shingle style. And again, we've thrown in the side-loading garage in the event in some lots we're able to do that. We have about 20 lots that are corner lots, so we have the ability to side-load the garages on these models or as I get further into the presentation, we have homes specifically designed for corner lots. Next slide. So the next one is the C model and the C, not to make it confusing, but the C model and the B model share almost the exact same base. The difference between the B model and the C model is that we have added a third bedroom over the garage. And when we do that, we introduce elements, dormers, clear-story dormers and the like. And this gives us variation. We have about 26 facade variations for 150 houses. We could do more as we decide to change it up or we introduce different vernaculars, but the goal is to create a load of variation and also because of being the C model interchangeable from a footprint standpoint, it's easy to build a two-bedroom unit in a location where we want and a three-bedroom in a location where we want. Next one. The Model D is among the bigger ones. I believe this is about 2,700 square feet. It's a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath. All the bedrooms are upstairs and we're introducing three different roof lines for this house. Now, I also, Tom had asked me to show a picture of an actual house that Tom has built. Can I say where it's built on?
Yes.
On Nichols Road. And so this is an actual representation of what we intend on doing. And if you look, this corresponds very closely to the original design documents. This house is 50 feet wide. It's going to be set on the narrow lot. Probably won't be on the longer, shallower lot. And like I said, it's about 2,700 square feet and we want to introduce a couple more roof lines because it's going to be important to create modulation along the subdivision. I think it's good for everybody. It's good for the neighborhood. It's good for sales. I like doing it. I'm an architect, so I'm biased. It's important that we offer variation. Next slide, Amy. This one we call the Model E is a home that I talked Tom into introducing into our repertoire. We have done this in Wellesley and in Needham and this is a smaller-scale version that has been greatly received by the historical commission in the town of Wellesley. We scaled it down, so it's about 2,800 square feet. And again, we want to offer various roof lines to create diversity among the neighborhood. This house is about 2,800 square feet and it's four bedrooms on the second floor, two-and-a-half baths and a two-car garage. And again, as you can see, the garage doors are four to six feet back from the front door. And as we position these houses close to the street, the garage doors being further back helps us alleviate some of the congestion from cars parking and encroaching sidewalks. Next one, Amy. Model F is specifically designed for a corner lot that is narrow. So as you can see by the walkway, it engages the garage that's perpendicular to the front door, so there's a streetway going this way and a streetway going this way. And it's a cute 1,800-square-foot colonial and it has variations in terms of what the facade can look like. Along with the facade, it's important to note that we can also create some modulation along the side because in this case, the house is, has two sides. Next one. The Model G is a Cape variation that we've decided to introduce because it is long and it's not deep. So for lots that are wide and shallow, this model works very well. Again, Tom has asked me to take a picture of an actual house that we've done, that we've designed and we can't help ourselves being architects. We want to offer variations to roof lines. We group these two dormers, create one bigger one. This has the potential for having a fourth bedroom if we chose to build over the garage. That would introduce an element over the garage here, like shown here. And again, in all these, we try to show a side-loading version. Last one. I'm sorry if I'm boring you to death. This one, Tom has actually built on Nichols Way as well. This one is designed for a corner lot because the front door and the garage doors are at 90 degrees to each other. This house is the biggest house of all the ones we're proposing tonight. It's 3,000 square feet, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, and it's very traditional design. And we could even introduce more roof lines and different variations to this model as And now the next one, the next presentation, Amy. configurations. We have a ranch model, which is a one-bedroom, one-and-a-half bath, all the livings on one floor. Again, the vernacular is similar to the for-sale houses with the difference being that it does not have an attached garage. Next one. Okay, so the next duplex configuration is a two-bedroom, one-and-a-half bath and all the bedrooms are on the second floor. Again, we're, we have covered entries. We have the same vernacular as in the for-sale houses. We have decorative dormers and elements. Glenn had made some comments at the peer review meetings about having covered landing areas along the back. We took that into consideration and thought that was a good idea and introduced this into the plan as well. And then the last one we have. This model is a little bit wider. It is a three-bedroom duplex with the master bedroom on the first floor. Again, same vernacular, different roof lines, lots of variations, covered entries. And then I, we have a couple of more slides. These are the three models for the handicap accessible units. We have a one-bedroom model, we have a two-bedroom model, and we have a three-bedroom model. And again, same language, same vernacular, and we have three of those and they will be grouped with the other units because we have 56 units and so we needed to group them with a non-handicap unit. And we have, we have yet to group them together and show your facade, but that will be in the works. One more slide, I think. We're providing two 12-bay garages as part of the rental project and I'm not a big fan of what I call Jiffy Loop syndrome, so even in this case, Tom gave us to go ahead to try to modulate the facade, create some interest, and again, try to create a common vernacular. And I think that's it, Amy.
You want to, I know you haven't had a chance to prepare a formal report yet. Would you like to make some general comments?
Sure.
And then, is that your formal report?
Oh.
Yes.
That's okay. This is a little general comment. I just want to say, my name is Los Pontejo. I'm an architect and I'm tasked with the project. We met, geez, it must have been about two and a half, three months ago with the applicant. Thank you. And we had initial discussions, that was back at the older site plan, but about the unit types and some of the considerations. I think this is worse than. It's okay? Okay. They did take a lot of the comments that we made into account. I see a lot of improvements, both on the treatment of the garages, the covered both front and back entrances, the idea of treating side corner lots so that you're not looking at a dead face on one side of the corner and just a front on the other side. Again, we haven't had time to really review it, but I do want to credit the architect in spending a lot of time in what we had made for suggestions and really thinking about the, as he described, the modulation, the variety of the housing stock so that this doesn't feel like a cookie cutter development. I'll take some time over the next week or so and really go through the specifics and then prepare a report.
Okay. Questions from members of the board?
The parking areas for the rental units. I think the detail for those, each rental unit or joined rental unit, where is the parking for that? And I know they have the 12-bay garages, so I'm just trying to say, how many rental units, how much parking one more time?
Each rental unit does have a driveway in front of it to park a car in front of it and then they have the option to lease a garage space across from the sort of the interior loop of those rental units. And they will have parking spaces in front of those too if the people choose to rent a garage space. So effectively, if somebody rented a garage space, they could have three parking spaces with that. They could have one in the garage, one outside the garage, and then the one in front of their unit as well.
I think it's on average, how much parking per rental unit is there available? That's the bottom line.
At least one. At least one for every rental unit.
Just out of curiosity, why, why didn't you design the duplex buildings for the rental project with garages in the units? Why do these rental buildings not have their own garage space like your for-sale units
Simply because most people renting may not want a garage unit. They may not want to pay that. It's a bigger footprint, but we do have the option with the one larger garage that people could rent a garage if they like to.
Okay, so how many garage spaces are there total? 24?
24.
24 and how many apartment units are there?
There's 56.
56, okay. So not everyone's going to get a garage if they want one.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, it would be really helpful, I think, for us to visualize these designs. It's great to have the architectural designs that have been provided. Is there any way to import that into the SketchUp file that you have? Because when you provided the Sketch, it was a SketchUp that you guys used. I mean, that's very helpful for us to see the site sections and visualize what this is going to look like. Is it possible to import these actual designs into that software program so we can actually see, rather than the boxes that we saw last time, if we can actually see these designs on the site? Is that feasible?
I think we'd have to talk about that a little bit. Could you talk about the roof plan instead of the box on?
Have you talked about the roof plan instead of the box on two-dimensional site plan? Is that what's happening?
I'm talking about the three-dimensional software program that you, that was, yeah, the fly-through, SketchUp is another term, but those, those pictures are like these generic boxes, right? So if we could see these house, these houses, what they look like on the site would be, would be helpful, like through a site section or through a computer model.
So an elevation or?
Yeah.
So if we took the half a dozen.
Like this?
If we took a half a dozen. That's static. That's great. That's just a static. It's three-dimensional.
Yeah, I don't mean the entire site. I, I just mean in, in sections so we can see what this is going to look like visually.
So, a series of static snapshots of a street state?
Yeah, that's one way to do it.
Not a flat as a location, like a perspective view like that?
Yeah, this is more of a, yeah, a perspective, yeah. I'm assuming the board members would like to see that. I mean, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I, I just think that that would be very helpful. I mean, it's, it's very helpful to see these elevations, but to actually see them in context, I think, would be better.
You have a plan that shows which house model goes in which spot, or is that something that depends on how they sell?
I don't know the answer to the second question, but we did position each one of these models onto the site with the exception of Model H, because we decided to introduce Model H at the last minute.
Model H is?
The, the last one, it's the, it's the 3,000-foot colonial of the White House. So, but we did position each one of these models onto the site to see what we needed in terms of, how wide can the house be? How deep can it be? Which one should go in the corner? The second part of the question I'd like Tom to answer, because I'm not so sure I can control that.
One of, one of the things that we did do here, and Henry did mention that in his presentation, is that the interchangeability of the, the footprints between models, so that if one particular type of home is more saleable than, than another one, we can actually interchange those footprints with not a lot of impact to the, to the calculations that went into this development. So that's, that's, yes, we, we know if one does sell a little bit better, is more marketable, then that, that could be a little bit more prevalent. I do want to remind everyone that we are limited though, you know, on how many two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and four-bedroom houses we have. So it's not like we can get our permits and build all four-bedroom houses. So we are limited in that aspect. But within that window, we do have flexibility on the different types of designs, or I should say, floor plans that we can offer. And that's another reason why we have so many different elevations to add character to the street as well. So if one floor plan is more popular than another, we may have a half a dozen elevations that we can apply to that floor plan.
Tom, can I ask you just a quick question? What do you propose to use as, as exterior siding material for these buildings?
The exterior siding would be, would be a vinyl siding, mostly a certainty to monogram. It's on most of the housing developments that I've done. It's a, it's a little bit more of an upscale vinyl siding. I find it more durable. We'd probably introduce some accents to that as well with some cedar impressions that look like, almost like a, a natural cedar shake. And then in some instances, we do integrate some brick veneer and things, either on a garage front or under a porch or in other locations. So the option would be there for, for homeowners to actually upgrade to different veneers if they wanted to, but in general, we'd keep it to, standard would be the vinyl siding, four-inch clapboard and exposed.
Thank you. Tommy, with the passing of the stretch code of North Fork, how do you expect that to affect this?
Actually, we've been, we've been building the stretch code compliance houses well before Norfolk even changed their regulations. That, that's not a problem. In fact, we were the first energy star builder in 2001 in the state of Massachusetts. So we've been building houses that are more energy compliant and, and, you know, for, for many years. We don't expect that to be an issue.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, questions from folks that are here? Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, sir. Sean Finerty, 56 Park Street. I was wondering, Tom, you kind of indicated that the apartments based on, I guess you're at the research that, you know, what we want rentals? I mean, I think in the demographic like Norfolk, most renters are probably going to be, I imagine, like empty nesters, older. I find it kind of hard to, I guess, from my point of view, like why someone, you know, in that demographic would want, not want that? And I guess the other point is, what, what type of analysis have you guys actually done on the rentals? And really on the, I guess, the entire development in terms of, you know, where you're projecting absorption there? I know it's a massive project and, you know, have you guys kind of gotten to that point? Or are you still kind of in the beginning because you're still in the, still looking a little bit more like what the feasibility and really the market, you know, any market studies you got, is that's actually out in the open yet?
We did do some preliminary a couple of years ago on the marketability of rental units such as this. And actually, the, the development itself, as the development becomes populated with, with people moving in and new residents and things, actually will drive the, the rental component. We had a whole study done on this, very similar to what you had mentioned, is that, yeah, there's a lot of snowbirds and different things, of people that actually would, would probably go south for the winter, but they have children and grandchildren that live up here that would actually, may want to stay in the rental units during the summer and, and be around the other eight to nine months of the year. That's why we didn't offer garages for all the units, because we felt as though there might be quite a few that people just aren't here in the winter in different times like that. So that was, there was one phase of the population that we thought would be very interested in this type of rental, where it's almost like your own independent house. And then also maybe a young family or you're a single person starting out, it's a great location for something like that as well, that somebody can start out in, in the Norfolk. The other, the other segment of the population looked at was actually single parents that maybe have children for the weekends or something, and they want a nice place, a common area, the open area behind the apartments for, for kids that they could, that could play and things, but, you know, they don't need all that space. They might only need one or two bedrooms, and it offers an opportunity that they can have a house and children can, can live, and it's not a three-story apartment complex. Mass Housing found these designs to be very, very attractive and were very excited about it when we presented them to them.
Tom, what about, what about the homes? So, what do you guys, I don't know if you guys make that readily available?
The...
I, Sean Finerty. I'm just, I'm just kind of curious, like what's, what's available with the public? What does demand, what, what demand analysis have you done? What absorbing analysis have you guys formed that? A lot.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a multi-year project with that. We actually estimate somewhere in the vicinity of probably, you know, approximately 30 units per year, 28, 29, somewhere in that vicinity that, that we, that we would build, that would go into our production schedule with that. And you're 100% right, the market does change and the economy changes, and that's the, the nice thing about having the option with two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom houses. If the market does change, we can actually be, actually be very flexible in what we offer for sale in those. And that works very well, so a project does not stagnate. Sometimes a two-bedroom house in a certain economic condition is more attractive than a four-bedroom.
I mean, with, if economics, I mean, I think most people would recognize they will change at some point, and, I mean, what, what does that do to the entire development? Do you put it based on goals? How do you guys kind of envision that? How would you, you're not just going to go and build a two-bedroom, which no developer does, but you're doing things in phases. If the economy turns at a certain point, how would you guys end up with your commitment? Just stop? Goals?
Actually, it's, it's a great point, and that's why we actually phased the development to only open up, it's actually broken down into multiple phases. So we're not clearing all the land at one time, we're not opening up and exposing all the, the earth at that time. It's broken down into like five phases. We open that up, we build that out, when we get the majority of where that completed, we open up another phase. So that way there, we don't have that, exactly what you're talking about.
What would you base your, I'm just trying to, it's just this town, I just don't see that, that saleable. Trying to figure out what, what your goal is.
Yeah.
I think it's probably regular, I'm just trying, I think it's kind of what you have, just picking the most.
I think by offering a broader spectrum of different type of housing, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four, four-bedroom, offers a, a more variety to the marketplace. And with that in mind, it actually offers more opportunity for different buyers and things. And it's, even the two-bedroom homes, I mean, when you have that, there's a lot less impact for schools and things as well, they don't have the children. But I think it's one thing that Norfolk predominantly, and please people correct me if I'm wrong, but it's mostly four-bedroom homes, and when you have just one type of housing like that, of course, that's going to limit what you sell.
Tom, let me add one bit of information. When the town conducted the housing production plan, we, the town hired a consultant to put that plan together, and she interviewed members of the land use boards, members of the community residents, and to discuss the different type of housing that would be needed in Norfolk. And the number one request was for additional apartments. Everyone that was interviewed said that, that's the one thing that we're lacking in town are, are nice apartments for people who are empty nesters, people that want a downsize, young people that want to commit to the community, can't afford a buy house right now, but apartments or something, we do not have. And that was the number one type of housing that was requested by the majority of people. If you've got questions about architecture, we'll entertain questions about architecture because that's the topic tonight. Yes, sir.
This question, kind of the previous question prompted, and I'll ask it, if it's a wrong, but the question, you know, there's a question around the impact of schools. Has that been studied before in the previous meeting? Can you just comment on that?
I'll comment on that. It's frustrating for us. It's not the purview of this board. When we complain to the state about the impact it's going to have on our schools, they're very, I'm going to say this publicly, very arrogant. They say, "Get to 10% and then come and talk to us." Other than that, we care. Well, seriously, we do not care. Say this publicly, 2B, anyone from the state who's listening, we don't care. They say, "Get to 10% and then we'll listen to you about your concerns about schools." Because we do have concerns about the impact on the schools. Not the purview of this board and the mass housing, they don't care.
If I could just elaborate on that one, one small bit with that, the chairman is actually 100% correct. The state doesn't care and it doesn't go into any consideration for a 40B project. But actually, trying to be conscientious and respectful to the town in Norfolk with things, that's why we also do offer two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and four-bedroom houses, because the two-bedroom houses just don't have the school-aged children that would impact the schools. So we're helping Norfolk to meet its affordability requirement, but we're trying not to impact the schools at the same time. So the two-bedroom do not, you know, doesn't have the school-aged children. The three-bedroom have a little bit more, but they still don't have the number of school-aged children that a four-bedroom has. So by breaking this up into like a third, third, and a third, you know, not quite that, but, but approximately that, we actually are very cognizant, and we try to, try to watch out for increasing that amount of school-aged children and still trying to help the town meet its 10% affordability.
Okay, questions about architecture.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike Judasi, Eagle Drive. Just two quick things. One, I would echo a previous comment in terms of not having garages for all the rental units. I don't know that I agree with that, and if anything can be done to increase the number of rentals that have garages, I think that would improve the look of the neighborhood. And secondly, though, the common garage, those enormous structures just seem so out of place. The scale of those compared to the houses is just overwhelming. If anything can be done, I understand why you want to do it that way, but if instead of two large buildings, it can be four or six, and just decrease the scale of them, they just seem enormous and just don't really fit with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Tommy, if every rental unit could be limited to one garage? In other words, if I have one rental unit, can I buy, can I get six garages? No, no, no. One garage for a rental unit. So first, what do you buy? And buy your garage. Or, right for life?
Peg Padilla, 28 Lawrence Street. I just have one comment first of all, is I had a two-bedroom house with three school-aged children in it. So that's not necessarily the case. I thought in the workshops, there was a discussion of no duplexes. Could someone answer that for me? At the last meeting, there was a discussion there was going to be no duplexes. It came out of the workshops, the private workshops that were being held. When did that change?
Yes, that is correct. We have no for-sale duplexes, but we do have the rental, we do have duplexes for rental, yes. But there is no, we did eliminate, oh, I think approximately 30 duplex units that were eliminated in this, in the most recent version of the plan here. And that's why on the Preservate Abbeyville, as you can see up front there, there's, there's no duplexes in those for-sale units either.
The one parking spot per unit? I don't know anyone who owns one car. As far as I understand, Norfolk is supposed to be changing that you can't park on the street. I don't know how that could actually work, especially for the three bedrooms. How much is the rent for a garage for the rentals? Because that would matter to people.
The proposed rental rate for the garage is in the pro forma. I don't have it right off the top of my head, and that would be market-driven as well. But the, the matter is, if we actually put garages with every rental unit, that's going to increase the, the rental cost of each unit with that too. So you're actually forcing then people to actually rent at a higher rate, where at least here, you're giving them the option if they don't want a garage.
Do you have a percentage of what it would cost versus the rent? I mean, that would probably be how I'd create a formula.
There is a fixed amount in the pro forma. I don't have it right off the top of my head with that. And it would just be a flat rate. It wouldn't be based on any percentages or anything.
Could we get that information at the next meeting? Would that be possible? Just because, I mean, it really does matter.
It actually should be on the town website, where it's a pro forma.
Okay, I'll look for it. I don't know how older people would go with a remote parking spot. I don't think if people are snowbirds and they have a garage off-site, I don't think that makes much sense. And then the other thing is, I do agree with Mike. I think the giant-sized bays are visually completely out of character to this town, and I think that that should be something that really should be considered to be broken down into probably no more than four bays per unit.
So I'd like to address the detached garage structure. The rental units originally were apartment buildings, and I think Tom has gone to great lengths to not make them look like an apartment building. If you go to any apartment complex, you will see these long, mundane, bland garage structures. We went to some extent to make these a little bit nicer. I, I would ask you to go look at some of these. As the chairman had said, if the town needs apartments, these really aren't apartments. We are, we are renting homes. And I think that question needs to be put in context. There's a lot of cost that goes into building a house for rent versus building an apartment for rent. I know firsthand, I designed plenty of apartment buildings, I designed plenty of subdivisions, and this is very unique. It's unique to my firm. We've designed 6,000 units in the last 28 years. I think this is the first time that I've come across building duplex homes for rent. So I would just like to give some perspective to this.
The other question I had was, so the math works out, 54 homes, one parking spot per home, 24 parking garages if people rent them. per home, 24 parking garages if people rent them. That means there's 30 homes with one parking spot. And again, if the town has gotten rid of street parking, it's not a very realistic formula.
Tom, I think, my, my personal opinion, and hearing folks out there and just looking at the plans, I think you ought to consider the parking supply for the, for the rental component. It just strikes me as this one space per unit is, is pretty small for, for a town like Norfolk where your project is not accessible to public transportation. You made a comment that you didn't want to force people to rent an apartment with a garage if they don't want one. Well, there is other options. They can rent apartments that are close to train stations and not have a car. This isn't close to a train station, it's not publicly accessible for public transportation. And I, I think though, that, I think we should recognize that the rental project is, as the architect said, not your standard rental project. It's not a big apartment building. And I think that's very admirable. I think that definitely fits better with the town of Norfolk and this neighborhood. Having these duplex units, I think, is great for, for a rental project. The architect said something just now that he's never seen this before. I've actually seen it. Actually Littleton, there's a project right over the Acton Line that, I believe Avalon, maybe it wasn't Avalon, but somebody Omni developed it and then they sold it to another developer. It's not that pretty, but they are, they are duplex rental units. So it does work and it does fit in better with the community than a big apartment building does. So that part's great, but I think you ought to consider the comments you've heard about the parking demand and whether you can incorporate a softer parking design than, than the long strip of garages and to provide, I think, more parking. The other complicating factor is 25% of these are affordable. And so are any of the affordable units going to have garages? It doesn't sound like that they would have that option. So I'm not sure just regulatory wise, whether or not that creates an issue between you and mass housing and, and whether or not that there's a fair allocation of the garages for market versus affordable. So I, to eliminate that, you might want to consider designing these duplex units with their own garages.
Am I correct in inferring that there's no basements with any of these houses or units? Is that true?
There are basements in the for sale houses and there are slab on grades for rentals.
Okay, so there are basements.
Slab on grade, no basements. On the apartments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for standing here. Further questions? Miss May.
Why do you not have basements here for rentals? I, my mother, actually, when I moved without a basement, she was elderly. We had a mover because the floors, it's so much colder when you don't have a basement. I never realized it because I never lived in a house without a basement. But it's cold. I mean, and the basement provides second floor, floor routine in a house that's in addition without a basement. I wanted to cook there. So we didn't, we just take, you know, step on that, or step on the other. It just doesn't, he's smart.
So rentals with the slab on grades, which basically means it's concrete floor on the first floor, the, the latest energy codes, the Energy Star compliance, the advancements in thermal breaks where concrete conducts cold. And, but, but that's the old days where, you know, if it was done even 10 years ago, my sunroom with a slab on grade done 15 years ago is cold. It's, just to your point, it's absolutely cold. Today's technology and construction methodology makes that no longer the case. And I, and I go, and I go, I go back again to the apartment model. If you're renting an apartment, you don't have a basement. You don't have place to store things. That's why they have storage units elsewhere. That's one of the downsides of renting an apartment. And so that was the logic behind not having full basements.
Okay, yes, sir.
Hi, Mike, I know 15 King String. I was just wondering, back to the parking situation, is there visitor parking for the rentals?
Did you sign it?
I'm sorry?
Yes, each unit has at least one parking space in front of it. And then you have the 24 garage bays, and then you have 24 spaces in front of those garage bays. So actually, in total, there's 104 spaces for somebody to park, or people to park there for 56 units.
Yes, but if they don't rent the garage space and they have guests come, where do the guests park?
It's also, it's also important to note that this is owned by one entity, the, the rentals with things. And if there was some parking on one side inside the Loop Road that didn't prevent safety access for, for vehicles, you know, that could be allowed. But we also will take a look at maybe some other common area parking, maybe within that area as well.
And will there be a restriction on like overnight parking? For instance, if one person, if, if you're renting this apartment and they had two cars or they purchased one car, they only said they had one car, they may want to park in that extra area. And will there be restrictions on that?
We will have some kind of rules and regulations that would address overnight parking for any length of time. Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Brian Cahaly, Cranberry Meadow. Regarding the 24 garages question, I think I heard each resident or whatever would have the option of one garage. Is that how I understood it? To rent?
No.
Yeah.
One, one unit.
Right. So in the event that they don't, they don't want them, they stay vacant, are they only available to the residents in the facility? Is there any, can people say that have a house in the, in the complex rent a, rent a unit? Is it, are they available for outside people to rent? What do you do with them if they don't rent?
They would only be available to those rented, those 56 units. They would not be available to outside.
So, so if they don't, if they don't choose to rent, to, to lease these or rent them or whatever, they'd stay vacant until they, they eventually do?
At that point in time, we will look and see if somebody, maybe somebody would want to, for a garage for one year. One garage for one year.
Okay. So it's just, again, it's just for the residents of the, of the complex?
Just those 56 units.
There's 56 units, there's only 20.
I got it. But I'm saying is if they don't want them and they sit vacant, it's just a big structure that's being built for, to kind of sit vacant. Just a comment. Thank you.
They're smart, they'll rent it and then rent it back to you.
Don't want it.
Tom, I would assume that in economics, you would determine the rental rate as a, as a manager of the rental complex. Correct?
You are correct with that, yes.
So if you only rented 12 units, then you might think of reducing the rental rate of the other, or all of them, and get them all rented.
Market demand, yes. Yes, sir.
Matt Eustace, Boardman Street. I know there was traffic studies done for like emergency vehicles and stuff. I think it's evident that there's going to be a lot of on-street parking with the rental units. Has that been taken into account with, with basically the people that are going to be forced to park in the street? And the, I thought I read on the website that there was a waiver issued for the curbing, for like an asphalt curb instead of a granite curb. I was wondering what the reason was behind that. I think that the asphalt might be less durable if it's something that the town's going to maintain. Thank you.
Yeah, Bill, did the traffic study include that?
I don't think it specifically addressed the issue of on-street parking, but I think it's, it's a good point. We have discussed quite a bit about the width of the roadways. I think they've been revised as the project has, has gone along. I couldn't say exactly what all the widths are off the top of my head, but I think maybe we just need to revisit that again, just to make sure that if there is on-street parking and particularly in the rental unit area, we want to make sure that emergency vehicles will be able to get by.
I thought I saw on the town website that there was a waiver issued for the curbing. Like I think the, like if the town, I think it's best if they ran a curbing for the roads. Is that, did I misread that?
Actually, yes, the, on the radiuses, on the cul-de-sacs, there would be vertical granite curbing proposed. The, the rest of the roadways would actually be a Cape Cod bituminous berm instead of slope granite curbing, which actually, many of the projects that are being permitted currently with the planning board are actually going to Cape Cod berm for ease of maintenance for the town DPW. We actually just finished a project off of Holbrook Street that was a Cape Cod berm. It's actually much more manageable and easy for the DPW to maintain. More commonly known as a Cape Cod berm. They're on quite a few streets. It's a, it's a, it's a Cape Cod berm. It's very calm and it has a, like a six inch slope to it coming back. It's gradual and not sharp, so the tires don't get cut on it and it's a lot more easier to maintain. Plows don't rip it up and things as well.
Is asphalt?
It's asphalt, yes, if that's what you're asking, yeah. But on the radiuses, you know, there'd be vertical granite on radiuses when you enter into a project, on the cul-de-sacs, on intersections, you know, that would, that would be vertical granite curbing.
Why would you use it on the radius? Is there a reason why you'd use that there, not the asphalt?
On the radius, to actually define that radius better for traffic.
Do you have a question?
Yes. Quick question from Matt. I'm just looking at the grading plan for the rental project. And the area that you had shown as the town common or town green or something, that's actually not flat, right? That's going to be a sloped surface. Is that right?
That is sloped, that's correct.
So that's going from 200 up to roughly 224 from end to end?
Over, over feet, so it's.
Over 400 feet?
Yeah, that's a pretty long space.
Okay. It's kind of hard to visualize that. I mean, is it?
It's pretty shallow slope.
Okay.
Not to rely on, pretty cross.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at, is, is, I guess I'd like to know what that's going to look like. And maybe our landscape peer reviewer can kind of advise us on that.
It's about half the slope of the main cap.
Okay. So I think, I think I'd like, I think we'd like to hear from the landscape architect and just, and on that issue, is this really going to be a usable green? Because that's a pretty important common area for the project. Is it going to be usable? Can people, you know, lay out there on a blanket? Can they play ball and so forth? Is that something, or is it going to be too steep?
No, we modeled that space too. The previous model that we did showed the actual proposed grades of that space, and I can provide that at the next, the next meeting, so you can visualize.
Great, thank you.
Well, talking about that green space, are there going to be vents associated with the, with that system underneath?
That's a question better asked at the, at the next hearing with that. There may be, I just don't know.
More or less, I was just wondering if it worked, where this would be, just position wise.
I can't answer that.
Tom, I don't know, I don't know, it would be helpful, I think, from the landscape architecture review, if there's even a rough layout of what that leaching system looks like for the treatment plant.
It, it actually is on some of the simple plans with that, you know, locations. And there's step trenches. I just don't know if there's venting requirements for them based on dosing or.
I'm going to guess there's some kind of venting required based on having pump it up, the dosing.
Some, some.
Where they'd be walking. So we'll look for that. If not, maybe it's out there, maybe you can provide it.
Definitely. Okay.
I want to just ask, I'm not sure how, I might have stepped in late. Are there berm's throughout the entire, or what I would call an island throughout the entire complex? You know, elevated dividers for the road? I don't, I don't know what, I couldn't understand the language exactly.
Medium strips.
Medium strips, okay. Is there medium strips throughout the entire complex?
No, just, just that main entry drive.
Okay.
Connected boards up to that circle.
So it's only visual, it's not into the community at all?
Yeah.
Okay, so I did ask, and I got clarified, that apparently the on-street parking is not allowed, something like December through March or something like that because of snow. So I guess the concern really is with the rentals is where do those cars go when there's snow and they need to put plows through that community? There's really nowhere for those, those cars to go. And it's a serious consideration.
Mr. Hill raised that issue. Okay. One more question.
My, Craig Cahaly, Cranberry Meadow Road, and don't want to beat a dead horse, but the parking on the rental units, I've gone through many rental contracts with four kids getting their first apartments. And typically, the number of bedrooms matches the parking spot. So if you're renting a three bedroom unit, you, they give you three parking spots. And reminder, it is illegal to park on a street in Norfolk after October 1st. So that would be a huge issue if he's hoping these streets to be accepted. So unless they're extremely wide and parking spaces were added on the streets. I think he needs to really reconsider the parking issue. You're looking at one spot per unit if you don't want to rent the garages. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you all for attending this evening. This concludes the public hearing for tonight. Next scheduled meeting, chairman, the motion to continue the public hearing for Preservate Abbeyville, Abbeyville Commons, until February 13th at 7:00 PM. Justin's hydrological study, continue the architectural and landscape review and other issues. Location at this building, junior high school, 7:00 PM. Do you hear a second, second favor? Okay, thank you. We'll take a five minute recess. All right, let's continue with the, our next item of review is just the site review for the on-site. We have three bids submitted. Have you reviewed? Oh, okay. Yeah, that's great. I can't hold it. Take care.
Is the rest of the business, uh, not available for public attendance, or?
I can find out.
There's the reorganization and then the abbey and the enclave.
That's cool.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I was just told I had to leave.
Oh, really? Thank you. I didn't know that, so. But I don't... The conservation, the same... Well, I don't have to wait two minutes. Second opinion. I was wondering if it was...
You filed your NOI for, you filed an NOI on it?
Yes. It's... Mike, we're still public, right? We're still public session.
Okay, still closed. Everyone's...
I, I didn't even know you were talking.
Yeah, I think we, yes.
Yeah, I suppose, no, so... All right, so, let's, uh, everyone have their, uh, ready folks. I think I'm going to be home. Have a drink, numbers and... No, I can't remember. Mike, you don't have names? No, no, no. I got one right here.
No, let's do some free...
Well, she'd like three.
I emailed my check.
I might be able to... You write your documents on... You guys have one down there?
Yes, right here, where?
Okay. Dan, I can shoot.
John, good to see you. Henry, nice to see you. I'm sure we'll be okay. Yeah, we will. Good to see you all, too.
Yeah. We just clarify this, yeah. Who is...
I wasn't available on the 20th.
I was there once before.
You were not available on the 20th, so you wanted to... I thought that's what...
Yeah, that's what we wanted to do. Okay, yeah. Betsy, Betsy thought she overheard that you were not available on the 20th.
Hey, John, are we still over the 28th or on the...
I think so.
Yeah? What do you, is a rumor flying that...
That's what I heard, someone spread the rumor.
Betsy, Betsy made some comment that said that you said your attorney wasn't billing the 28th.
Oh, when you were there today?
Yeah. No, I didn't say they bought that.
I have it in there. It's in there.
I'll tell you, I know. John, it's big news. Big news, John.
Are, are, are you going to make a decision on the, um, should I stick up for, what you're going to use for peer review?
Yeah, you can listen in.
Okay.
All right, so we've got, uh, three bids for the, what I call a choice of property, and the official name is...
The enclave.
The enclave, okay, get used to that. Tetra Tech, Beta, and McMahon. McMahon is a firm that Newtown Planner has used in the past. He's had some success with them, likes the way they work. Uh, Beta is a firm that we have experience with. Uh, they've already started working on behalf of the Concom on the enclave project, so they've got familiarity with the project. Uh, Concom is using them. And then Tetra Tech, uh, who's been very good, is also submitting a proposal. Uh, if you look at the ba- the basic numbers, Tetra Tech's been, is a little bit high, but I can envision them not doing the traffic review or the architectural landscape review. So if you back that number out, uh, they're right in the ballpark in terms of a bid for this project. So, um, we've got, you know, we can open this up and discussion. I guess my general thought is, uh, I came in here tonight thinking that, uh, we might want to make a change for Beta. We've given them a lot of work. Uh, they've already done some work on behalf of Concom, uh, for the enclave. That consistency, I think, is important. I could definitely see Tetra Tech in the mix for 144 C Con, which is going to be a very important, what you'd be hearing, I, you know, and again, I'm hoping their bid for, for that project is within, uh, within the, uh, scope of whatever else is proposing. So those are my general thoughts, open that up for discussion.
I think it's important, Mr. Chair, that, just, looking at that total figure is really deceptive because it's, each, each proposal's different. You know, Tetra Tech has a $9,000 meeting expense, but that's, I think that's just an estimate because we don't know how many meetings are going to be. And, uh, I, I think the most important number to look at is the hourly, hourly rate, because ultimately these guys do what we ask them to do. And, um, I think the most important thing to look at here is the hourly fees and the quality of work. Um, you have the luxury now of having worked with both, uh, Beta and Tetra Tech enough that you know the respective quality of work. Um, the pricing, uh, I think Sean's billable hourly rate is 225 an hour. Uh, looking at Beta, they're in between 160 and 200. And then McMahon is a huge structure here and we have no idea who's going to be working on it, so it could be anywhere from a buck fifty to two fifty. Uh, so there's definitely some variance, I think, in hourly rates. Um, and that, that's one consideration, but that doesn't have to be your overriding factor. Uh, and then in terms of, you know, as, as Mike said, the, you know, Beta's familiarity with the project is definitely a factor to consider. But, you know, I don't think that you should feel bound to go with somebody who has, uh, has worked for the Conservation Commission. Uh, there may be some benefit of having two engineers look at a project, because with projects like this, um, multiple sets of eyes are often beneficial, so...
Dan, can we, can we, like, award, for example, the architectural landscape review to one person?
Absolutely. And I, I'd actually recommend that. I actually don't, my, I've worked with these firms and I, I don't think Tetra Tech's traffic engineer is better than Jason at Beta. I actually like Jason a lot. I think he does a really great job and, uh, and there's also a couple other traffic engineers that I've worked with in the past who do great work and you could use a different firm for that. And I'd actually recommend that. I would split this up, I would...
Certainly, I think we've been pretty pleased with Glenn as it relates to architecture and design.
He's good?
And he's not married to Beta either. I mean, we could use him as part of...
I was wondering, can we use him? They seem to have his own firm.
Yeah, his own firm, you know, he's not married to Beta. We could use him as a consultant. If we go to the room, I kind of like the idea, try to split this up a little bit. Uh, Jason and, of all the traffic people that have come before this board over the years, I think Jason has been the best.
I could get more quotes too for traffic. Uh, there's, there's another guy that does a great job, Gary Ebert. Have you worked with him at all?
I, was that MDM?
No, he's with, uh, Stantec now. He was with Facebook for many years. He's an older guy, but he's, he's very, very good. Um, I've worked with him.
What are the issues that you see as dominating the enclave project? Any wetlands, any issues like that?
Could I...
Yeah, I don't know.
The, um, if you're going to break it up there and things, it would be, I think it would actually work well, is if Beta could just at least do the stormwater, because they've been diving into that pretty, you know, pretty deeply. And, um, there is a lot of wetlands on the site. We're not really in the wetlands at all. There's no wetlands crossings, there's no, I mean, we're trying to stay outside, uh, 50-foot buffers and, you know, we're within a little bit of the riparian in some areas, but in most, in most cases, we're, we're out of those, um, buffer zone, um, areas. But, uh, where they've really analyzed a lot of this already, I think it would be good if, at least for that component, everything else, you know, if you want to go do whatever you want to do, that's, that's fine. But it would be good to keep some continuing, uh, continuous review of that.
Yeah, otherwise you're just duplicating the same review, really.
And, uh, actually, if you did do that, maybe they could re-quote that or something, knowing that they've done with conservation.
Yeah, okay.
Is this septic?
Um, it's going to be a community septic. It's not going over 10,000 gallons per day.
So this is the project, it's like, um, it's, it's basically duplex buildings, very close together, um, not a lot of yardage space, not a lot of common area. Um, you know, I, I think this project is something that I think would benefit from a good design review. Um, something we haven't talked about, um, from projects, I mean, for the, for the Abbey ville project, I don't think it's necessary, that, that feels more like a subdivision. Uh, whereas this project is going to be a lot more dense. Um, I actually have had really good success with a architect who has provided review services for, uh, the town of Grafton and the town of Brookline, uh, for multifamily projects. He's really good at looking at buildings as well as site design, layouts of roads, you know, roads vis-à-vis buildings and so forth. So that might be something to consider as a separate peer review element. Uh, his, his name is Cliff Bulmer. Do you know Cliff?
Yes.
John doesn't like him.
We're not, we're not in the, in the business of redesigning the entire project and, uh...
Cliff doesn't do that?
Uh, yeah, he does.
Maybe he had a bad experience, but...
No, no, I've, I've actually, we've, I've represented a developer who's used him and, uh, we've been peer reviewing his site.
Okay. My experience is he's actually very, very objective and, uh, you know, he, he works for developers, he works for municipalities. Um, I, I think that's something that would be a lot of benefit for the, for this project.
Can Tetra Tech do that type of review?
No. I mean, I, I'm talking about design, I'm talking about architectural and, and site design. I mean, sure, Sean can provide...
All right, all right. I mean, we've used Glenn in the past, we, we were very happy with this. Uh, the way he works with the applicants and the way he, I, I'd like, personally, I'd like to stick with Glenn in terms of, uh, site review and architectural. If the board feels differently...
But I, one thing, just to make sure everybody on the board realizes this and stuff, is that this was actually filed as an age-restricted project. So, yes, the units are a little bit, um, more dense, but there is a lot of open space that's, that's not developed. But part of the reason for that is because they're all ranches, because of the age-restricted element of things. So if there's actually a re- somebody who is, has a little bit more familiarity or experience with an age-restricted development, uh, Glenn or the gentleman you mentioned, whoever, you know, that might be worthwhile considering with that, um, you know, as what we're trying to do, keep it all on one level for, um, for, uh, age-restricted demographic.
Dan, when you say site review, you're not talking about civil engineering?
No, site design. So looking at, you know, looking at landscaping, looking at, you know, how the buildings fit on the site, how they are vis-à-vis each other, how they are vis-à-vis the roads, sidewalks, you know.
We've got, uh, one of those, uh, and your gentleman does that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I feel like Glenn really focuses on the design of the buildings. I, I don't really, I've, I've never heard him really talk more about the broader sort of 60,000-foot level review, um, but maybe he can. I, I don't, I haven't worked with him.
We did a little bit with Glenn with, um, vicious project by the train tracks.
Maybe he'll do it. He was doing six of one a week, Danny.
Didn't he traditionally use Glenn up at Cleveland Street?
Yeah.
And there, he definitely did get involved with some actual locations and moving of buildings. Buildings, yeah, he got them to move buildings, um, top-down, 60,000. I'm just, Dan, I, I like your suggestion. I don't want to try to, try to keep this to the three that we're looking at instead of expanding it, uh, if at all possible. So if we were to crunch this out, divide it up between Beta and Tetra Tech, how, how would we do that? Uh, stormwater for Beta?
Yeah, I would, I would keep all the civil design under one roof. I, I don't think it makes sense to use one firm for stormwater and another firm for other civil elements in this.
You'd like to see them do what they have in...
Civil, basically, civil.
Civil and stormwater?
Yeah, so something, all, all under the civil engineering review. So we, maybe Tetra Tech do civil engineering review, we'll decide on traffic, architecture, we could do Glenn for their architect, landscape, I don't know, I don't know. Does Tetra Tech do the landscape?
They have one.
They have one.
I haven't worked with them.
Or do you have some other one? We know some other ones, too.
I don't.
You don't?
So you'd be bas- basically duplicating stormwater, is that the case?
So Beta's already done a stormwater analysis for the...
For the one, for the conservation?
Yeah. I don't know whether we want to duplicate that work, that doesn't make any sense. Stormwater, civil...
David, David's raising a point, though. It, it provides a check and balance, okay? This, this site's had a lot of issues in the past, all right? And this town is dealing with those issues today, so, uh, I think it doesn't make sense.
Your peer reviewing, the peer review, I don't know.
Uh, this, this site has a lot of history on it, as you know.
It was a very different development.
I don't agree, though. But it has a lot of history between...
Well, wetlands, this, this project doesn't involve the wetlands, so there's a huge difference between that old project and this one. Um, traffic, I think, is a big one, quite frankly. I think traffic review is going to be important. Traffic flow is going to be important within the complex. Mr. Glenn, what do you think?
I am, uh, I have no problem with Beta doing the civil. I think Beta would, not Beta, I'm sorry, Tetra Tech. I'd like to see Tetra Tech do the civil. And then, uh, Glenn for the architect because he worked well with, um, is, uh, Henry going to do the architecture on this?
Yes, yep.
Okay. I would do, I would do Glenn on the architecture. We can talk about landscape, traffic, I think we have a couple of choices here that we can make, you know, to pick on that tonight, between Jason and, and Dan mentioned some other ones. And we're going to have some issues with traffic, even though it's coming off of Phyllis Street. We're still going to have some issues there. So I would go, I would say if we want to do anything that could award civil engineering, and I don't think it's a duplication, I think, I think Tetra Tech very quickly can look at what Beta did already and answer. I don't think it's going to be a complete re-review, so that would be my thought.
All right, so...
And I agree, Dan, meetings, you know, the, I mean, Tetra Tech has, I think, seven meetings in his proposal, um, Beta has, I think, five, and McMahon had three, so it doesn't work that way, as we know, they've been here for probably nine or 12 already. So I don't think you can look at that, you can't look at the total number, you've got to break it down.
All right, so, uh, the piece that we'll, see if Beta is interested, it would be the traffic and what else?
And the landscape.
Landscape. Okay, and then civil and stormwater, we'll go to Tetra Tech?
The board chooses, huh?
And, uh, traffic will stay with Beta.
Landscape and then architecture will, then architecture would be with Beta as well because Glenn could...
You're real comfortable with that?
So we want to ask them to do that and then get a response from them. We'd say she'd be able to do this pretty quickly, right?
Yes, Beta.
Beta, if they would be doing those three, would they be willing to just do those three items?
Right.
And also ask Tetra Tech the same thing, as long as they're comfortable just doing the civil. I'm sure they'll say, "Fine."
Yes, and so Beta, we traffic landscaping.
And architecture. Architecture, we do the civil.
Any types of, uh, tires?
Yes.
Stormwater. Okay, so, um, we'll, we'll put those back, I guess, back out to bed?
No.
Does it have to be, does it save the cost of that? Not out to bed, usually, just to happen to cost out.
I think you just reply to the bids and ask them if they're willing to modify their, their proposals in accordance with what we decided. If so, give us a new contract proposal.
We'll probably try, what do you think, go, 10 days, maxing?
For their response?
Yeah. Just so we can get a pick, so we can get moving on, so we're not delaying your project.
If, would, um, in, in your proposal to, or request for proposals...
Traffic, I think, is a big one, quite frankly, I think traffic review is going to be important, traffic flow is going to be important within the whole place. Mr. Glenn, what do you think?
I am, uh... I have no problem with Beta doing the civil, I think Beta would, not Beta, I'm sorry, Tetra Tech, I'd like to see Tetra Tech do the civil, and then Glenn for the architect because he works well with, um... Is Henry going to do the architecture on this?
Yes, yep.
I would do, I would do Glenn on the architecture, we can talk about landscape, traffic, I think we have a couple of choices here that we can make, you know, pick on that tonight, between Jason and, and Dan mentioned some other ones, and we're going to have some issues with traffic, even though it's coming off of Villa Street, we're still going to have some issues there, so I would go, I would say if we want to do anything that could award civil engineering, and I don't think it's a duplication, I think Tetra Tech very quickly can look at what Beta's doing and answer, I don't think it's going to be a complete re-review, so that would be my thought.
All right, so...
And I agree, meetings, you know, the, I mean, Tetra Tech has, I think, seven meetings in his proposal, um, Beta has, I think, five, and McMahon had three, so it doesn't work that way, as we know, they've been here for probably nine or 12 already, so I don't think you can look at that, you can't look at the total number, you've got to break it down.
All right, so, uh, the piece that we'll, see if Beta is interested, it would be the traffic and what else?
And the landscape.
Landscape. Okay, and then civil and stormwater, we'll go to Tetra Tech?
The board chooses, yeah.
And, uh, traffic will stay with Beta?
Landscape and then architectural, then architecture would be with Beta as well, because the client could...
You're real comfortable with that?
So we want to ask them to do that, and then get a response from them, we'd say they should be able to do this pretty quickly, right?
Ask Beta.
Beta, if they would be doing those three, they'd be willing to just do those three items, right? And also ask Tetra Tech the same thing, as long as they're comfortable just doing the civil, I'm sure they'll say fine.
Yes, and so Beta would be traffic, landscaping.
And architecture. Can Tetra Tech do the civil?
Entire civil.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, we'll put those back, I guess, back out to bed? Does it save the cost of that? Not out to bed, usually, just to happen.
I think you just reply to the bids and ask them if they're willing to modify their, their proposals in accordance with what we decided, if so, give us a new contract.
We'll probably try, what do you think, 10 days, maxing?
For their response?
Yeah. Just so we can get a pick, so we can get moving on, so we're not delaying your project.
Would, um, in, in your proposal to, or request for proposals, would you actually ask that they have comments back for the meeting on the 28th, or is it, you know, or is that, um, I mean, when would, when would they have comments back, is that, is that part of the, um, RFP? If you're awarded February 7th, would they have to have comments back by the 25th or 28th for the opening of the hearing?
Well, when you open the hearing, what do you want to do? What, you're going to, you're going to want to go right into civil for the first night?
Well, it's a general introduction, but it might give us the opportunity to go over the comments and to save a little bit of time, and then maybe respond to those comments. It'd be, it'd be nice to, to have those comments, um, maybe they don't have to present for the 28th, or maybe they do present, but if we could have them for the following meeting instead of...
We'll give them our timetable, tell them what our timetable is to make sure they can meet that criteria, just so like tonight where Beta had comments but didn't have a report, and so it was good, but really wasn't what we, I think we would have preferred to have a real analysis.
They don't know if they're on this, they only had it for a couple of...
Yeah, yeah, so, we can ask them that.
Between now and the 28th, I would think would be an opportunity.
Yeah.
I would think so, at least people are traveling for school vacation week or something, but...
We'll put that in the responses to them to ask, make sure they can be prepared for that, if they're going to do it, they should be prepared already, you're going to prepare it on the 28th.
That, that would be great.
Yeah. Who's going to go in? Okay. All right, so, um, have you covered that, there are only any other questions, comments, suggestions?
Are you going to talk about the bridge, are you going to put over the wetlands to Tudor?
I wasn't expecting any bridge to Tudor, but they, uh, they expect in two lanes or four lanes to travel.
Six.
Don't forget the fart.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so we have one other, um, item to see, uh, oh, Dan, thank you very much.
Yep.
Dan, when do we start again?
It was a mess, man, right?
December the 13th?
Yes.
He's also accepting the waiver, between the 28th and the 28th.
The 7th.
The board on that. He's given a request. The extension.
Oh, yeah. He's giving two... I have your...
Oh, would you like to say?
That would be a weekend, you are...
It's up to you. It's up to you.
Did you have that, the waiver on the extension for...
Abbey Bill.
Oh, for Abbey Bill? Well, I don't think there was anything to sign, it was just, uh...
Well, that was like we signed.
I thought you signed, yeah.
Yeah.
You should have a copy, Josh should have a copy.
I have a copy.
We have two of them.
Have a great day tomorrow.
All right, thank you, goodnight.
So we don't, we don't need Dan, we'd like him, I mean, I'd have to go.
Okay.
He's on our calendar. Cal for you.
Yeah, yeah. All right, we have one other item on tonight's agenda, and that is, uh, to discuss with your organization, the board, um, after 15 years and six years as a chair, it's, uh, time for me to step aside once I'm ready and, and the time, like, I'm working on it, quite frankly, my schedule this year is exhausting, uh, so I, I just do not have time to do that, not this job. I would like to make a motion to nominate Chris Weider as the next chair of ZBA, I'd also like to make a motion for the clerk to be a shared responsibility between Joe and Dawn. Let's take a second.
Can we have, like, lead clerk, and you can be my sub...
Support, support. Future.
Have a second.
Yeah, I have a question.
I can't...
I have a question, I have a question.
Now, let's talk.
Question for you, Mike, you're, you're staying on board.
Yes.
You're staying on, you, you, you're going to retain your ZBA membership?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Now, for five years, right?
Yes, I just got ripped away.
Can I, can I also just, just ask a question, so, I came on this board, and I think it's the very first day I was made vice chair. So my question to you would be, would you like to assume that role of vice chair?
If nominated, I will, would accept it.
Okay. You want to be the clerk?
No.
Well, you said that too quick, that's a worry.
I'm sure you don't want to think about that.
You know what I'm saying, you know, because I was, you know, you've experienced five years.
Yeah, I mean, if, truth be known, Chris and I work hand in hand, I mean, we're probably putting 10 to 15 hours a week, and now hindsight, he's going to be, he's at town hall, emails, and, and, uh, he knows what I'm going to say, I know what he's going to say, and it's, it's a good working relationship, um, so if that's the pleasure of the board, I would accept that, so...
So make, make a motion, and Mike, please, a...
The motion on the table.
So we'll do the first motion first.
Yeah, we'll start in a second, yeah.
So we're doing discussion, discussion on, uh, chair and clerk.
We can also make a motion on the, uh, vice chair, too. Yeah, we can do all three, as one motion.
Yes, you want to restate the motion?
Yes, we'll restate the motion. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to restate the motion. Also like to nominate Michael Kaliza as a vice chair for the ZBA term. If you have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. All right, clerks, you guys willing to do this?
Is that veto under our...
We can do anything, we can do anything we want, John.
Okay, can I have two clerks share the clerk position? No reason we can't do that.
I don't think we'll do that.
Amy would like two times as much help, right?
I'm okay being the clerk, if John is willing to back me up in case I get into a war conflict myself, but, yeah, I can, I'll take the clerk and make you a clerk in training.
Clerk, you want to be clerk in training?
I'll be clerk in training, that's...
A lot of it is cut and paste, and it's not, but you also get to really learn, you know, zoning.
No, I'm happy whether we do it co or I be, I be, so, all I'm saying is, is I want to get in a situation where you come back to me tomorrow and say, oh, Amy looked at the, at the town bylaws and said there can only be one clerk, and Joe said no, so now you're the clerk.
Joe has been clerk before, he did a great job, and I don't want to burden him with that again, because he's like me, he's, he's going to be in Concord, New Hampshire...
And I think after a year working with you, if you say after a year, I'm not promising Amy, and I don't mean televised, but I, I might say, okay, now that I truly understand the scope of the job.
It'll work, let's do it that way.
Okay.
All right, uh, are we ready for vote? Any more discussion?
Who are we nominating as clerk, just Joe?
Do you want to put language in that we have a...
Associate clerk?
Associate clerk, why don't we call him associate?
Sure.
Why don't we call him associate clerk? Yeah, let's do it.
I don't think anybody's going to question it, yeah.
I'd like to be able to boss them around with them.
All right, so we have four positions, chair, vice chair, clerk, and associate clerk.
I have regulations to be, I mean, I don't know, you guys probably know better than that.
We're going to do that.
All right.
We're going to do that, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, you have Mr. Vice Chair, thank you, try to do a good job, Mr. Luciano.
You're going to be working really hard.
What that means is, Mike, is, is now Chris gets the big box, you don't get the big box anymore, okay?
And I get the boss mic round.
Does that mean we're all locked into new five-year terms?
What's that?
Does that mean we're all locked into new five-year terms now?
Who's locked into five years?
I don't know, what year am I in now?
I'm with you.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, not yet, we're still discussing five-year terms, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, when is, because you also have another associate.
I guess we've got a new associate that I've recommended to the board of selectmen at their point to our board, so Devin will have some company in the associate role, and then in the event that, you know, one of us decides not to do this anymore, at least we have two associates who've been in training who can be bumped up to, uh...
Full members.
Full members, and, you know, Devin, you know, I hope you stay a long time, but you may end up in South Boston next year, or the next year, or the year after that, so, uh, the woman that we've, I've recommended to the board of selecting as an attorney, I've talked to her, I think she'd be a great asset, a great addition to the board, and she, she wants to, she's crazy enough to want to do it.
My goodness, don't get hurt, Bob, we won't have to do anything. Between her, Bob, and Dan, okay, you, you could basically sit out the car and just smoke.
You know, I think the word's dream team, I'm just saying.
Yeah, oh, we get a lot, oh, we get a lot, we get a lot more questions.
Okay, uh, are we done discussing terms and everything? Okay, motion to adjourn.
Mr. Harrison, motion, I think, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn the ZBA meeting of January 24th at 9, 10 o'clock PM.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Isn't he the chairman?
Okay, you can just go up now.